Second by Mrs. Swanson. Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Bisken, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. On behalf of the students, teachers, staff, and administration, I would like to welcome the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, district leadership, and all of you to Wheat North High School. Specifically, I would like to welcome you to our new library. Our library serves as a learning hub of our school where all types of formal and informal learning takes place. As many of you know, our library was flooded last year, and we were not only able to restore the space, but transform it into a collaborative and exciting learning setting. With financial support from our Falcon Booster Club, leadership from our former principal Jill Bolo, and Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations Bill Farley, and outstanding vision from our librarian Angela Pagone, this space has become a place of sharing, problem-solving, and most of all, learning. Before I begin, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their constant support for everything we do at Wheat North High School. Your leadership is appreciated, and we thank you for the time you give to our district. Wheat North High School has always been regarded as a school that challenges students inside and outside of the classroom by maintaining high standards, providing a rigorous curriculum, offering an enriching fine arts program, and having a competitive athletic program. However, the main reason our students love coming to school is because of the strong and positive relationships they form with each other and with the various adults who lead and guide them through their four years at Wheat North. Every time someone asks, "What's the best part of Wheat North?", an answer that centers on the people is given. There is not a better place for a young person to grow and develop a passion for learning and a sense of self than Wheat North High School. I know for me there is not a better place to serve and work, and I know my colleagues feel the same way. As you can see on the screen, I utilize social media, specifically Twitter, to tell Wheat North's story throughout the school year. Utilizing this communication platform has given everyone a chance to be informed about what is happening regarding Wheat North in the present and in real time. We always talk about preparing our students to do great things when they leave high school and enter the real world. Using Twitter to tell our story has allowed people to see the great things that our students and teachers are doing now to help change the real world in a positive way. It is also used to show how learning occurs not just in a desk, in a row, in a classroom, but in all forms and in all types of settings. Wheat North has been a staple for 50 years, and this year we are celebrating our 50th anniversary. Wheat North High School broke ground in 1963 and opened its doors in 1964 to its freshman and sophomore classes that totaled 461 students. Those students had the chance to participate in 10 student clubs and six different sports. Today, we have just under 2,200 students with 47 student clubs, 19 performing arts offerings, and between girls' and boys' sports, there are 25 athletic teams to choose from. Part of the 2,200 students who attend our great school are 135 English learners who come to us from 21 different countries and speak 23 different languages. We truly have all types of students from all types of backgrounds. With me here tonight is a Wheat North student, Hoi Nu. Hoi Nu was born in Burma. She came to the U.S. as a refugee with her parents and six siblings in November 2011 and started sixth grade at Franklin Middle School. She's a wonderful young woman who provides an important perspective about what it's like to be a student in two different countries. She is here tonight to tell her story and read her third-place winning essay in the ITBE writing contest for grades 6 through 12. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Hoi Nu.
My name is Hoi Nu, and I was born on March 14, 2000. I lived in Dedim, which is a small village in Burma, and I speak Xol. I have seven siblings. My oldest sister lived in Malaysia. I moved to America when I was 11 because my father told us to come to USA. My father left Burma to make money on 2015. In Burma, rich people are very, very rich, and poor people are very poor. We are so poor, that's why we left Burma on 2010. It was very tough for me because everything was different from my country. At the airport, I was so worried because my father didn't show up. The airport was very huge, and I saw many different faces. I looked high and low for my father to come. Luckily, I saw my father and his friends coming towards us like a toad coming out from his chair. I was so excited to meet with my father after a long time. There are many differences between America and Burma. First, there are many apartments in America. In Burma, we don't live in apartment even though we are poor. Next, we don't have to pay taxes, and we don't have a big market. People come to our house and sell things that they brought. We have some markets, but they are small. Then, in Burma, most, most poor people had cars because they don't have a job like America. America and Burma schools were very different. In America, we don't have to pay for school and lunch. In Burma, we have to pay for school, and wealthier people got good grade even though they are not that smart because they pay, they pay teacher to teach them after, after school. In Burma, we don't have free lunch, so we went home to eat lunch or bring lunch at school. There are 11 and 12 grades in America, but we don't have juniors and seniors. As far as I know, most school in America don't wear uniforms. In Burma, if we don't wear uniform, the teacher will give you punishment. Also, we don't have gym class like American do. We don't play any sports at school. Some boys play soccer after school, but they just play for fun. I went to Franklin Middle School in November 2011. I didn't even know how to say "how are you" when I first came here. I worked really hard and learned English at a snail's pace. I left, I felt like I live in jungle because it was too crowded in the hallway. Every time, every time I went to school, there were butterflies in my stomach. One day, my favorite teacher, Mrs. Sander, told me to not go down and keep a stiff upper lip, which mean work hard and be brave because I was a quiet person. That pull gives me so much strength. In Burma, teacher never speak to the students except when they teach. I was still nervous when I was in eighth grade because Mrs. Sander was not my teacher anymore. Eighth grade was the hardest year and the happiest year for me. At the beginning, I do not know anyone except my friend Suzy. It was really hard because most of my class were regular. I sometimes want to disappear because I have no idea what, what world we learned. Every day, my friend and I stayed after school to work on homework. I get along with my teachers and got a lot of help from them. I realize all teachers are the same. They all nice and cares about their students. Last year before school was over, my friend and I created the Teacher's Day because we're, we were so grateful to our teachers. In Burma, we celebrated Teacher's Day once in a year, but it was not the same with us. We did it differently. We gave our teacher thank you letters or cards. We collected money from ESL students and bought food. Suzy and I bought neckties for the principal and vice principal with the money that we saved. The teachers were very touched, and most of them are in tears. It was one of the best moment for me. I was a little nervous again because high school and middle school were different. I have different classes with my friends. Also, the teacher and the school were different. When I get to know more about high school, I realized high school and middle school were the same. The teacher cares about students. Thank you.
That took a tremendous amount of guts on her part, and we're very proud of her. Give her another round of applause. Also, I'd like to recognize and thank Mr. Bacopolis and Mrs. Gannon for their help in bringing Hoi Nu to this point. Students like Hoi Nu have graduated from Wheat North and gone on to be productive citizens and do great things. But no matter their professional title or status, they all come back to visit because Wheat North represents something more to them. It represents home. It is a place where they felt valued and supported as young people, and the relationships they formed during their high school years still stand strong today. Since the start of our school year, I have shared our school's vision with anyone and everyone who will listen. It is something that guides the decisions we make and the goals we hope to accomplish. It is this: My hope is that every student who walks across the stage at commencement to receive his or her diploma will have a real passion to learn. Whether that passion has been inspired by a teacher, counselor, coach, sponsor, or peer, it will be paired with the skills that will enable our graduates to develop and refine their passion for lifelong learning. Whatever interests our students may have, we will work together to inspire and support them. Hoi Nu, along with all of our students, are well on their way to fulfilling that mission. And they are on their way because of the outstanding leadership provided by our phenomenal teachers and staff. As I stated before, we have tremendous academic programs, outstanding extra and co-curricular programs, and facilities that allow our students to work, practice, and demonstrate their diverse talents in a wide variety of ways. However, the primary reason our students come to school every day is because of the relationships they have with their teachers, coaches, counselors, sponsors, and peers. The foundation of learning and development has and continues to be built on personal connections. It's the relationships that our students are currently forging that will serve as the groundwork for the stories that they will share with each other when they return to Wheat North to celebrate its 75th anniversary in 2039. It's the connection they have with the people of Wheat North and with each other that will endure and cannot be broken. To put it simply, we are Falcons, we are proud, we are North. Thank you.
Are there any modifications that board members wish to make to the agenda? No? Okay. Then, recognitions and achievements, Dr. Schuler?
Thank you. And I'm gonna welcome back up to the microphone Mr. Bisken and Mr. Claypool that are gonna join us. We had a great opportunity before the meeting this evening to have a reception where we honored, had a chance to meet some of our finest students. And I'm really pleased that we had the chance to have that reception. I knew we were gonna be doing the recognition tonight, but really wanted to make sure selfishly for my benefit, I had a chance to actually meet the students and hear a little bit about some of their future plans, but same for board members. So, I'm proud to reintroduce Mr. Bisken and start our celebration tonight.
All right. First, can we have all the National Merit Finalists students and their parents? If you could line up to the side here so when we call your name, you can just stand Why don't we separate? It's okay if we can start maybe in the back of the table. We'll have North on this area and then South in the area next to them. Tonight, we would like to recognize the National Merit Finalists from Wheaton-Warnsville South High School and Wheat North High School. We are proud of the National Merit Finalists and for their efforts they make to strengthen their learning, and their parents for the constant support they provide for their children. To reach this stage in the National Merit process is a great accomplishment and achievement. To give you some context regarding this accomplishment, every year about 1.4 million students take the PSA team. From there, 34,000 students qualify for the title of commended students. That number is then condensed to 16,000 semifinalists. Then, it is dwindled down to 15,000 finalists, and that is where we stand tonight. The students here tonight are what I would consider the best of the best. First, we will recognize the finalists from Wheaton-Warnsville South High School, and to introduce them is their principal, Mr. Dave Claypool.
I've spoken publicly in many different venues and followed a lot of great speakers, but I have to admit that I am humbled by following the speakers that I have tonight. Hoi Nu, that was a wonderful presentation and demonstration of the remarkable accomplishments that can take place at a great high school like Wheat North. Tonight, we also bring together two schools that at times enjoy a great rivalry. But tonight, we are here to demonstrate the remarkable accomplishments that can take place in District 200. I'm here to speak on behalf of those who represent the South Side of Wheaton and Warrenville. The young men and women I'm about to introduce are not just bookworms. They're not just great students. They represent far more than that. I went through yearbooks and talked to some people to find out just a sampling of the experiences they've had beyond the classroom at Wheaton-Warnville South. They are members of Key Club, Cross Country, Soccer, Marching Band, Scholastic Bowl, maybe no surprise, Track and Field, Chess, Math Team, and Youth and Government, just to name a few. They are well-rounded young men and women, not just great students. And so, it's my pleasure to present to our Board of Education and all those who are here today to witness it the five National Merit Finalists from Wheaton-Warnville South. First, Drew Anderson. Drew, please step forward. Sorry, I should've prepped our kids better. This is our tradition here at District 200, where our board members have the great opportunity to congratulate you personally. Ed Dreyer. Camille Ferrucio. And Angela Lang? Again, on behalf of Wheaton-Warnville South, we want to congratulate not only our students, but all the students from Wheat North as well. It's as high an accolade as you can receive as a student in high school, so we congratulate and commend all of you. Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, when I call your name, please come up and shake the Board of Education's hand. We're very proud of you. We'll start with Marissa Anis. And we have one National Merit Finalist from Wheat North who is not in attendance tonight because he is at a state swim meet recognition, Mr. Matthew Rogers. Please give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Can I get, before, before we break, I know Mr. Lacan is probably gonna take a picture, but we're certainly here tonight to celebrate the achievements of our students. But I know that their achievement tonight, their learning, and what they've accomplished for our high schools would not be possible both without the support of their parents. So, parents, thank you. This is a celebration of your work tonight. And I also wanna thank and celebrate, as we pointed out earlier, the work that our teachers have done. I know that we've got a lot of teachers here tonight, and learning in the classroom would not be possible without the challenge and the opportunities that you've created for them. So, teachers and staff, I want to give you a round of applause, too.
Thank you very much, and thank you, parents. As Dr. Schuler said, without you, this wouldn't be possible. We know how much you've supported your students throughout, and it's, it's amazing the job you do, and the students you send us are just amazing. So, thank you. We're now to the point in our agenda where we have public comments on agenda items. So, the opportunity, the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item at this time. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders, and we value your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting, so please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board. Limit your comments to three minutes, and please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing.
I am commenting on the Verizon cellphone tower being considered at Wheaton-Warnville South High School football field. What I find most troubling is that this item was originally on the consent agenda. It was only after the board heard from a concerned citizen that this item was moved to the action item, or at least it would be discussed. Why did the district staff put something of this importance and impact on an agenda without any discussion? Cellphone towers carry their share of controversy, and with good reasons. According to the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy, 94% of those people surveyed reported that cell towers in a neighborhood would impact their interest in a property. 79% said under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower. Yet we have a district staff that was going to try to pass this with a total lack of transparency, without discussing this with staff and parents who'd be directly impacted by this, for $30,000 in revenue. Parents have a right to be informed and should have a say on issues affecting their children, especially health and safety. While some experts, particularly those with a financial vested interest, will tell you there is no conclusive evidence, which might be that these towers are harmful or not, other experts would disagree. I have an article here on a cancer cluster from a cell tower at San Diego University. Rich Farver diagnosed and died from GBM brain cancer October 11, 2008, Nasseter Hall, Room 131. Charles Cutter diagnosed and died from GBM brain cancer, 2008, Nasseter Hall, Room 131. Lou Terrell diagnosed with lymphoma brain cancer, 2008, Nasseter Hall, Room next to 131. Dwight Anderson diagnosed with different form of cancer and died, 2008, Nasseter Hall, Room 131. Richard Funston diagnosed and died from GBM brain cancer in the 90s with cell tower present, Nasseter Hall, Room 131. Mrs. Kathy O'Hara diagnosed with GBM brain cancer, May 2008, KPBS news station on campus. And Ms. Laurel M. Tower diagnosed with GBM cancer, November 2009, died August 29, 2010, Arts and Letter Building, right next to Nasseter Hall. Quite compelling data. And while there is no concrete evidence, either way, someone argued, let us err on the side of caution regarding our children. If this district so desperately needs money, let's start by cutting out sick leave and vacation banks. You know, have all employees start paying for their retirement benefits. You'll have significantly more than $30,000 to spend on students' education. This board and staff have an obligation, first and foremost, to be open and transparent and to involve parents on a decision such as this, and then vote in what is in the best interest of the student's safety and health. We all use cellphones. People are using them tonight. While the reality is we all rely on them, many questions and much more information is needed. Is this truly necessary? And if so, maybe we should find a more suitable location situated further from a neighborhood and especially our schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm also gonna speak about the cellphone towers initially, and I'm just gonna go back and look at the community engagement report. It says it's recommendation number five about transparency and disclosure. Well, if you look at the disclosure for the cellphone tower, all the exhibits A, B, and C are missing from the, from the website. So, here, here you're sending information, and all the information's not even available for the people to look at. So, I suggest that you should at least table this, you know, table the vote until the next meeting, and get some more public input, and provide the missing three disclosures that's, that was missing from the website. Now, to continue on with transparency stuff, I'm gonna move over to the budget side for a minute. I'm just gonna read a quote from the Daily Herald. It says, "In order to have a balanced, in order to have a balanced budget the last two years, we have made cutbacks of what was planned for technology and capital expenditures." That's the quote. It was made by a board member. The, that statement is correct. You know, we did have balanced budgets. However, what he failed to disclose is that we actually ran a deficit when those years of almost $2 million. And I know this campaign sees a lot of things that's happening. You know, I believe in transparency and stuff, and people should be speaking, you know, facts and saying that we actually did run a deficit in one year, and that we don't always have, we don't always follow a balanced budgets.
Mr. Barista? Did I say that right?
Close enough. Barista.
Not the coffee guy. Sorry. Good evening, board. I'm Bob Barista. I'm from the other side of the tracks, Wheat North. And I'm lucky to be their Booster Club president for the last couple of years. And at the Booster level, both at North and at South, we work really hard each and every day. And we strive three times a year to give money back to the school, to the teachers, and to the sports teams and clubs that need the money. and to the sports teams and clubs that need the money. And over the last five years, we've donated nearly half a million dollars back to this Wheaton Warrenville South school and classrooms to the students and teachers. My issue tonight regarding the cell tower opportunity with Verizon is a great opportunity. It's been missed before recently, in the last few years with the school districts at other schools. And park districts and municipalities have taken advantage of those contracts going forward. So, I did a quick search today on other schools and universities who have made agreements and partnerships with Verizon and AT&amp;T and other carriers. And some of the best educational institutions in the country, like Notre Dame and University of Maryland and UMass and Wisconsin and Georgetown, have all, in the last two years, made similar agreements. Some not as lucrative as the agreement that we have on the table right now with Verizon. And other school districts, within a stone's throw of this facility, have missed the opportunity to receive that kind of annual income. I believe in creating partnerships, and the district and board knows that, that you have to get creative in these days to acquire more and more revenue from outside companies, municipalities, park districts, in order to take on big and better things. Your budgets get smaller each year. Our needs grow bigger each and every year. Every classroom in the school has been affected because of the booster club. Boosters are important, but so are agreements at the district level, partnering with corporations and companies and municipalities for the betterment of the school and the kids. And that's my opinion. I think it's a good opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Barista. Mr. Barista, I am so sorry. As InteHar gets mispronounced so much, so please, I feel your pain. And I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, but thank you. I have not had the opportunity to meet you, and let me just use this opportunity to thank you for all you and the boosters have done to support our high schools, because we, you know, if we sat around this table, we were accepting gifts tonight. Without the parent's support in our district, we wouldn't be able to do the programming that we do. So, thank you. Okay, I think that ends public comment. Dr. Shuler, superintendent's report.
I have just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board tonight. We started this meeting with a tremendous set of student accomplishments. Each month when we meet with EC-12 administrators, we start each of our meeting with just a very simple question to all of them, and that's, "How are the children?" And really, how are the children is our opportunity to capture lots of celebrations that are going on around the district. I wanted to mention that in a future meeting, we will be bringing some more celebrations to you. Wheaton North had a tremendous celebration this year of a swimmer that won a state championship, I believe, for the first time, individual event. Now, he won a state championship, set a state record in the process. Wheaton Warrenville South had several members of its speech team win state championships in some individual events associated with competition. Two students from Wheaton North, as part of a culinary team, won a state championship at a state-level competition. And so, there were so many of those tonight, we didn't want to bring those celebrations and in any way delude either the celebration of our National Merit finalist or the students that we're going to bring to you. But I did want to mention it tonight and let you know that our goal is in April to bring those other celebrations to you. And again, that just represents kind of the tip of the iceberg of the many things for which we're really proud. Also, wanted to let you know in your folder tonight, there is a flyer handout for the classics. It's a show choir competition taking place this weekend at Wheaton Warrenville South. I believe that the first act goes on at 6:00, or first group goes on at 6:00, and then it will take place again on Saturday. So, if board members or anybody that's here would like to come out and hear some tremendous music, great competition and performances from, excuse me, from some of the best groups, not just in our local area, but regionally, nationally, please do on Saturday or Sunday. I have just a couple of financial updates for the board that I wanted to mention tonight. We have talked, I think, in previous meetings about SB1, Senate Bill 1. Senate Bill 1 is the replacement for Senate Bill 16. There was a school funding bill that had been advanced through the Senate in the fall. Never got called to a vote in the House, and so it effectively dropped, but Senate Bill 1 is the new version of that. We do anticipate within the next week that numbers will be released on Senate Bill 1, the modeling of what the impact of that will look like over the next two years. At this point, we know conceptually some of the changes from Senate Bill 16 to Senate Bill 1, and I do think there are some positive shifts in some of the way that that bill was modified, the inclusion of a regional cost index, some kind of recalculation of the way that poverty numbers or special education numbers are calculated within a school district that impacted. But really, I think the true devil is in the detail when the numbers get released, so we should know that within the next week. Do want to just mention that categorical payments are behind again this year. We are back in a cycle of delayed payments. I believe we've received two. One at this point, with a second anticipated hopefully shortly, but that is a significant delay again, much like we saw several years ago, and I think it's anticipated. We are certainly not going to get all four of those quarterly categorical payments, certainly within this fiscal year. We have not had an indication at this point that we will not receive them all, but we, I think, are going to be back in a significant delayed, you know, cycle, which again, I think board members often point out when we talk about that, that just reiterates the importance of fund balance. That helps us to make sure that we can manage through those low cash points in the year. And then finally, wanted to mention there continues to be some renewed conversation now around that pension cost shift, now that pension case was being argued today in front of the Supreme Court. It has re-energized, I think, some discussion around the potential of the cost shift. So, that's just one other financial piece that we're watching very carefully, as there seems to be some discussion now that that cost shift, if it comes, will come even a little bit quicker than was anticipated before. So, just as we approach budget season over the next couple of months at the board level, we are going to be reporting out on some of the goals and the initiatives that the board has expressed interest, that you've set as goals, as we look at professional development, technology, some of the other areas that we certainly want to fund, but we are just going to have to be, I think, very, very mindful of that financial picture and reality as we really think about those priorities and, more importantly, the building of the budget for each year. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention is we've had a lot of conversation around the board table about Park, the new state testing system for this year. It is underway in many of our buildings. Tomorrow, with a couple of other superintendents, I'm going to have an opportunity to visit with Congressman Roscom. And one of the things that I just want to point out is that at the federal level is right now where they're really looking at the reauthorization of the Elementary Secondary Education Act. That's what mandates the testing that's in place at each of the grade levels, and that bill is long overdue to be retooled. And so, we're going to be visiting with Congressman Roscom to talk a little bit about, you know, the interests and the needs around reauthorization of the Elementary Secondary Education Act. So, again, that is certainly, at a higher legislative level, I just want to make the board aware that we're working on that.
Thank you, Dr. Shuler. Now, we're to the partner agenda. We're at the consent agenda, and we have 12 items on the consent agenda tonight. First is acceptance of a gift to the vocational staff of the transition program and the Wheaton North High School program. Approval to post revised policy 7.100 health examinations for public review and comment. Approval of high school health textbook. Approval to purchase high school health textbooks. Approval to post middle school science standards. Approval of a plat of easement with the city of Wheaton. Approval of temporary construction easement agreement at Wheaton Warrenville South High School with Patrick J. Murphy Builders Incorporated. Approval to add three middle schools to the current Enernoch Agreement. Approval of an RFP for an electric supply contract starting December 2016 through December 2018. Approval of bills payable in payroll. Approval of Minutes February 11th, 2015 open. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to October 2013 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of the absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, then we'll need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Swanson? Seconded by Mrs. Coghill. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Could you briefly describe for the audience, potentially, is why we have a consent agenda and what data is provided so that background of anything that we get here that we're going to be voting on and so on, a little more enlightenment in that topic, I would call
Yeah, well, yeah, and I guess in terms of background information, board members will note that any of the consent agenda items are presented with the appropriate background material that supports that item. I think with the number of things that the board approves on a monthly basis, on a regular basis, I think you've got a consent agenda for items that may not require discussion from the board. I guess the one thing I do want to point out is that in anticipation of every board meeting, I do sit down with both the board president and the vice president as we set the agenda to not only make a decision about what goes on the agenda, but where things go on the agenda. And again, it's never to work around transparency in any way. You know, I think there are some items that have become a little bit more routine for the board and go on consent rather than go on discussion. But an item at any point can be pulled from consent, moved to discussion, as one item was tonight.
In general, is the data that's contained, you know, as part of our board materials available to the public to look at that supports that consent agenda? What if I have a question on the consent agenda materials? How do I go about dealing with that?
You are, okay, as a board member, certainly board members after you receive the packet, ask lots of questions of clarification, of which we do provide additional information if needed. So, board members have opportunities to ask questions and clarify things that may be of concern or question to them.
And those questions are general? There's not discussion about them, you know, within the board or whatever? Is that correct?
I pointed this out at prior board meetings, that with respect to consent agenda items, board members often frequently email questions to the superintendent, which we all get copies of, with respect to consent item agendas, and then get responses back. If we believe from the nature of the matter that it should be moved to an action item, consent item agendas are often moved to action items, or at times moved to action items. However, most of the consent item agendas are easily answered, or the questions we raise are really easily answered, and the responses are shared, and more often than not, the board members are satisfied, so that many of the consent item agendas never are moved to action items. With respect to transparency, the only reason our public commentators knew about the Verizon contract is that it was publicly available beginning on Friday. So, nothing was trying to be hidden from the public with respect to that. Indeed, a number of board members, board or superintendent suggested that we move that item to the action item, and it was moved. So, with respect to transparency, the public has seen what we have seen with respect to the Verizon matter, and I guess it's been appropriately moved to an action item.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, not a question, but a comment. With my eighth-grade daughter going to high school next year, I took it upon myself to look at the health textbook, 650 pages. The only health issues the house can fit in her backpack. So, I looked at every page. I feel, I think it's a fantastic book. I certainly feel comfortable as a parent, but it's a very well-rounded book, way beyond what I ever remembered in high school health. I think this work is very positive.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I have a couple to make with respect to the consent agenda. And, you know, Mr. Madison and Mr. Roman have so eloquently spelled out and asked about, and Dr. Shuler as well. But, I mean, even then, when we get to our meeting, as you've seen tonight, there's another chance to remove an item from the consent agenda if the board wishes to do so, with the question that I asked before that. So, then, that's another checkpoint where if an item is deemed to be controversial or whatever, it can be moved to an action item. So, there's a lot of checks and balances that go on throughout this process, that it is our duty and our hope that the public feels comfortable with that. Certainly, if there are better processes, you know, I'm sure we'd be willing to take them into account. But this format for the agenda has been vetted through many professionals, through attorneys, through open meetings, people, and it's worked well for this board for a very long time. So, thank you for asking the questions and bringing out the issues on it tonight. And if there's no further discussion, I think we should call for the vote.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Gavagani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. InteHar?
Yes. Dr. Shuler?
Yeah, so the one thing I wanted to mention to a formal introduction, one of the things that the board, excuse me, one of the things, it's not well-stated, one of the individuals that the board just approved this evening for employment on the consent agenda is the appointment of Mr. Sean Walsh. Mr. Walsh will be the principal at Longfellow School beginning July 1 of 2015. Mr. Walsh comes to us most recently from Hinsdale 181, where he has served as an elementary principal and is a curriculum director. Prior to that, he has some experience in District 15 Palatine as an elementary assistant principal and principal. And probably most important to note, this is his return home. Mr. Walsh started his career in District 200 as a teacher at Lowell Elementary School. And so, Mr. Walsh, we welcome you back home.
And I just would like to, on behalf of the Longfellow students, Longfellow parents, and the Longfellow staff, we'd like to welcome you to Longfellow.
All righty, we're to the point in our agenda where we have our action items, and the first action item is approval of the Vision 2018 dashboard. Dr. Shuler?
At the board's last meeting, and actually, I think in the background of this agenda item mentioned, since late fall, I think the board has been working on the identification in the building of a dashboard to support both our Vision 2018 plan as well as the goals that you've set for the school district and certainly for me. At the last meeting, I presented to the board for discussion a copy of the Vision 2018 dashboard that identified a series of metrics in the area of student learning, of community engagement, of finance, support systems, and where am I missing? The fifth one, facilities, thank you. And so, we brought that dashboard back for approval tonight. As we've indicated, I didn't get any additional questions following the last meeting, I think with the exception of Mrs. Swanson had asked just one question about a few of the areas. So, most of the areas in the dashboard... So, most of the areas in the dashboard are identified with a very specific metric-oriented goal, but there are a few that identify the development of a plan. A couple of areas that I'll just give you as an example of that are incorporation of technology, community engagement, and rather than try to identify a single metric, we actually think it's a more robust monitoring for the board to monitor annually a plan for how it is that we're going to go about engaging our community and work with them to advance the goals and the vision of the school district. And so, understand that a layer beneath that plan are going to likely be a whole series of other metrics that may define success in that area, whether it be numbers of opportunities for community engagement or effectiveness of those opportunities. But there are a few areas where I think Mr. Roman, as he first talked about this, I think even with the board said, to dispel it down into one single metric, I don't know that you could do that in a few of the areas. So I do just want to make sure that the board knows and understands that in any of those areas where we've identified a plan, that will be reported out at a board meeting, committee of the whole meeting, where annually you will receive an update and a monitoring of that plan. So I'm pleased tonight to recommend that you approve the Vision 2018 dashboard, and we will certainly, from there, get it posted up onto the website with your other strategic plan or Vision 2018 kind of documents.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. I don't know, I was remiss in excusing any faculty members who would like to leave, but I think it looks like quite a few have left, so if there are any remaining faculty members who would like to not participate, be here, you may leave, we won't feel offended. But, yeah, I mean, seeing nobody get up and leave, it sounds like you're all really interested, so good. Okay. Okay. Okay, I think we could get a motion on the floor to approve the Vision 2018 dashboard.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coghill, discussion.
Well, I just want to say that as I'm looking to lead the board, this is one of these things that we've been talking about almost the entire time I've been on the board. So it's only taken 16 years, but we've made it. And so, I'm truly pleased to see us getting to this point because I think it is something that we've needed and something that will be appreciated by our community, and I think you've done a great job of trying, of pulling it all together at last for us, so I very much appreciate it, and I liked what I saw. I did ask you about some of those items that had, you know, processes, and, you know, my hope would be that as time goes on, the board that is sitting at that time may identify certain elements of each of those that are more meaningful to be quantifiable, and that they would go ahead and do that as opposed to just monitor a process. Because I think, you know, if you're just monitoring yes, we're doing it, well, that's great, but doesn't make any difference whether or not we're doing it. So, and I think you've got that well in hand, but as we've sometimes discussed, sometimes it's good to just articulate what the expectations are, but I am very pleased to see this, you know, coming to fruition, and I'm only sorry that I won't be around to monitor those processes in the future, but I will certainly be checking the website wherever I am and making sure you guys are on top of it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Roman?
Yeah, Mrs. Interhart and myself are on the Wearing and Teaching Committee, which reviewed the student learning metrics that are in the Vision 28 annual goal dashboard. And I'm personally very satisfied with the depth of research done and the consensus and the collaboration achieved in accepting or incorporating these metrics into the student and learning, the student learning portion of the dashboard. Just to highlight one example, this is the first example there, where we talk about average ACT composite score. And Faith, if I mistake something, I'm looking to you to make sure I state this right. In eighth grade, our eighth graders take, was it the Perry?
Plan.
The Perk Plan test, which is an ACT type of test. And typically, well, this past year, our eighth graders had scored about 17.5, 17.6 on that test. And traditionally, what happens is that from the time that our eighth graders take it, there is a growth rate by the time our juniors take the ACT of about 6.5 to 6.75 percent. So if it's a 17.5, for example, and a 6.5 growth, I don't know, 17.1 and a 6.5 growth, we would expect these eighth graders to get around 23.6, 23.7 by the time they're juniors. Our principals got together, from my understanding here, and along with Faith and her staff, Superintendent Schuler, decided to pick up that growth factor from the range of 6.5 to 6.75 to seven points. And that's where we get the 24.1 percent, based upon what the eighth graders currently have, or now freshmen, I guess, in high school, achieved when they were in eighth grade. That's how much effort and research and evaluation went in to establish that particular baseline and benchmark and metric. And similar research was done on all of us. And it's for that reason, I too will support this board.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Any other comment? Anyone from finance? Mr. Matheson?
This is more of a general question, but this is the goal, the annual goal dashboard. Whose goals are these? How do they relate to what I'll call the superintendent's goals? So we have clarity on that. And what if we, you know, there's issues here that are not completed, you know, that, you know, I'm, I, there's always outside influences that can impact on these. And I'm also, I'm a little concerned whether it's a seven-point goal or whatever, you know, that we have them be realistic, I guess, and, you know, because I think we're going to try and measure these to achievement and be accountable to them. So I think that we have to be able to deal with the modification of them and recognize that that may come down wrong for the line for some reason. You know, I mean, we're changing the whole testing way we test students now, and maybe the ACT won't be there, so we may need to modify these. Again, these are three years out, but, you know, again, I think they're, again, goals and objectives, but they, you know, we have to recognize they're not cast in stone, and there can be modifications of, you know, things, you know, without, you know, getting into the finance or whatever. We're confronted with, you know, potential significant impact that's outside our control, and so we have to be able to react to those, I guess is my point. But, you know, I would like to, again, say how these are, whose goals are these, and, you know, how do they interact with other units of measure, I'll call it.
Absolutely. So I think in terms of the first question, whose goals are they, they're our goals. I think they're our goals not only as a board and senior leadership team, they're our goals collectively for the school community, and they need to be. In terms of how they relate to my contract goals, they do very directly. So what the board, I think, has tasked me with through the goals you've set in my contract were to develop measures for all of these areas and, you know, for us to monitor those on an annual basis. I think you raised a good point that I just want to point out in terms of the actual layout of the dashboard. So the dashboard shows what the metric is, gives a rationale as to why that's important for our students, for our community, for our staff. It establishes a baseline or a starting point. It establishes an end goal, but it also has a column in the middle where on an annual basis, we'll monitor how we're doing in our effort to, you know, to reach that goal. And I think you're absolutely right that I believe we've set targets that are appropriately challenging. Appropriately challenging means that I believe that they're attainable, but they have not been set at a level where I'm telling you we're going to just blow past them with a modest amount of work. They're challenging goals. And so, you know, will we hit every one of these numbers? I'm not going to, I'm not going to promise you that because they are appropriately challenging goals, but we certainly are going to work with the board to monitor our progress, to adjust strategy if we're not making appropriate progress to them, or to have an honest conversation if in some way that those need to be adjusted along the way. But that, there's that annual measure that has kind of a, kind of a color-coded progress that tells us how we're doing so that we're not just waiting three years to see how we've done as well. We're working on it along the way.
So I look at this as a vote tonight, but it's really the next step in a conversation that started about 18 months ago. So we were sitting, I remember, I think it was at Wheaton Warrenville South High School in the cafeteria, taking a vote on the community engagement process. So that night, we started the, what led to Engage 200, which I think opened up a new level of transparency and communication with our community, which then led to Vision 2018, which was cool, late fall, early winter, which then led to the development of goals that we've established for this year and will continue on for every couple of years. And now, now we have a reporting tool to allow the community to go see how we're doing against really what started 18 months ago. So I see this as really just kind of the next step in this larger process. It's not just about the goal dashboard, it's really about a communication and drilling into the metrics that we need to measure ourselves against for students as well as for the community. So I really like this. I think the one thing that I think I brought up last time is by definition, a dashboard is dynamic, so I really look for the future as the elements and for the definitions, rationales can become hyperlinked to further details for people to drill down and go understand in more depth. I think that'll create a much more useful tool than just seeing how we are at one given point in time. So I look forward to continuing to evolve and be dynamic, so. And I also look forward to what's the next, starting, you know, from the Engage 200 process. So that's, that's my comments.
Are there any other comments? Mrs. Coghill?
Well, I'm very excited about it because for most personalities, us and the staff, teachers, if you have a target and you know what you're aiming for, it's much easier to achieve, and it's a path, and this is a living document that's fluid and I'm sure going to be changing as it goes. It'd be nice to, this might be transitioned into, this is, if we're not reaching our goals, what's it going to take, and especially the financial aspect of it, if we, maybe this will pinpoint more the aspect that if we don't have the funds, we cannot give our children what they need, and what do we do about that? I think hopefully that this, you know, we could be experts on what we have, but if we want to get them and stay up with technology and learning and teaching, you know, what is the next step with that? So I think this is going to be a real nice road path to identifying, you know, if we've reached our limits, then what do we do?
Okay, I think that's everybody. I see Mr. Gambiani, your head's shaking, yes, anything to add to those comments? Okay. Alrighty. Dr. Schuler, have you anything to add? No? Good. All right, well then I think it's time to take a vote on the dashboard. So, Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Perry, yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes, motion approved. Thank you, Dr. Schuler and staff for us.
Mrs. Swanson, I'm sorry. I'm not gone yet. To paraphrase Monty Python, I'm not gone. Yes. Yes.
Our next action item is approval of our auditors. So, Dr. Schuler, would you like to give us some background information on that?
Yep, I will, and actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley, who's going to lead this discussion. Certainly, Mr. Farley and his staff have been working with the board and specifically Finance Committee of the board and working through the audit RFP process. And, Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Our three-year contract with our current auditor ended this year, and we got out on the streets early with the audit RFP. We had 18 firms that we sent the audit to, we had seven respondents. And when we got the information from those seven respondents, that information was shared, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, that Mr. Matheson and Mr. Gambiani were helpful in helping us evaluate those RFPs, and we narrowed it down to three firms based on qualifications and what the superintendent stated its expectations of the RFP were for those firms, and we spent a morning interviewing those firms and came to a resolution or a recommendation that's in front of the board today for Miller Cooper. This would be a switchway from our incumbent auditor, Baker Tilly. I don't think that's a bad thing, I think Baker Tilly has been of good service to our school district, but gave the fresh set of eyes to look on our books and our procedures and practices, I think there's time to write, and that is a recommendation for the board to promote the board audit.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the auditor?
I make the motion to approve the audit.
Moved by Mr. Matheson.
I will second.
Seconded by Mr. Gambiani. Is there any comment?
The Illinois Association of School Board had a class on school finances about three years ago that I attended, and it was recommended that school districts change auditors, or at least review their auditors every three to five years. I think this is the right move, and I thank Mr. Matheson, Mr. Gambiani, along with you, Bill, for going through this process, and this is a big service, I think a great service to our community and to our district, so thank you.
Anybody else? I echo Mr. Roman's sentiments. Thank you, Mr. Gambiani, for filling in for Mrs. Swanson in her absence. So, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Matheson, for your expertise in this whole endeavor. And of course, Mr. Farley, you do a first-class job as usual, so thank you very, very much for taking us through this. If there is no other further comments, then Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mrs. Interhart?
Yes, motion carries. Our third action item is approval of the lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for the cell phone tower that you've heard about earlier tonight. Dr. Schuler, do you have information for us?
I do. As we, when we pulled the agenda, that agenda item off of consent and moved it under action for tonight, we put together just a couple of slides. This information is not new for the board. I think you had this information in the background this evening, but for anybody else that certainly might be interested in learning a little bit more about what this is, we put it together. And we just want to walk through a couple pieces of background information on why it is that we're looking at this agreement with Verizon, a few of the actual logistics, and then ultimately what our recommendation is. So, Mr. Farley, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. I want to talk a little bit about the process and how we got here. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, obviously, through our Vision 2018 plan, you know, the board has identified it's scoring alternate revenue sources, you know, when it's available to meet just the school district needs. That was echoed in the community engagement process, one of the things that we heard from the community was go out and find other funding sources to supplement what we're doing here in the school district. The agreement that's in front of you tonight, it generates $30,000 in the first year and has an increase that's built into it for each additional year. I want to just give the board a little bit of an idea of where it's going to be located. It's on the northwest corner, the northwest light pole on the football field. From a historical standpoint, the school district has been approached in the past about cell towers at Wheaton Warrenville South. In fact, the one that's now in Atton Park, which I'll mention a little bit here, was supposed to originally be at Wheaton Warrenville South, and it ended up at Atton Park. But it's on the northwest tower, which is on the visitor's side, on the north- everything that is ours would be relocated to that pole, and the antenna would go on top of it. A little visual of what it looks like, it doesn't look probably too much different than towers you see around town. I'll talk a little bit more about the location of some of those. I did actually ask Verizon, Verizon rep to go out and get pictures of what it looks like. Conant High School right now is putting one in on their football field, they're actually putting a second one in on their football field, second pole. And, and I got pictures of that, and I shared that information with the high school so they could get an idea of what it would look like as well. And I mentioned that cell towers are becoming more commonplace. School districts are working with them. Couple of our benchmarks that have them right now, Indian Prairie 204 and St. Charles 303 have similar agreements in place. Spoke to the city of Wheaton, talked a little bit about some of the locations of cell towers. They have the water tower over on the fairgrounds, has cell towers, Wheaton Towers down, many locations downtown, IIT, the Theosophical Society over by their Public Works Building, and Faithy Evangelical Church, which is on Butterfield, just east of the high school also has a cell tower in Tideman as well. And then the lastly I mentioned earlier, the one that was originally targeted for south years ago was moved over to Edmond Park. So the Park District also has a cell tower right there. Concerns were mentioned tonight about the cell tower. Obviously, the district would not enter any revenue generating agreement that would create a health risk to our students, employees, community members, or deaths. There is a great link on the American Cancer Society relative to the cell towers, along with a number of different items that folks have had concern over time. And we'll post this on our website, so that you can go to the link of the American Cancer Society, where it states that there's very little evidence to support and claim that cell towers are increasing health risk. And there's much more information, and that's just a summary of it, but I would encourage anybody that has concerns to take a peek at it. It does have a lot of great information. So with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions the board may have regarding this agreement.
Bill, how, how did this opportunity present itself?
We were contacted by a rep for Verizon Wireless over the summer, last summer, actually, and been working with them. And the high school, they have to come out and do surveys, not only of geotechnical surveys of the ground, but they have to verify that that location works for them. And then they presented us with a draft agreement. There were obviously negotiations, and we had our attorney look at the document and make sure that everything in there was appropriate. We did get some comments from the board that we incorporated into the final document, and then we negotiated the pricing.
Is, is this time-dependent? Is there a deadline that they need an answer by, or?
Verizon would like to have this done probably yesterday. Obviously, they've invested a lot of time and effort into this, and as I mentioned, we go back to the summer, so they would obviously like to do it as soon as possible. If you're asking if they'd walk away, I don't believe so, but again, they would, they would like to get, get moving on it. We would also have to, because it does involve some construction, we would like to work with the high school to, for an appropriate time to get that done.
I just wanted to question then, that is the, you know, if, is there any out on this contract or cancellation clause about, in, in, you know, something that might be tied to, let's say, the city of Wheaton prevented future cell towers to come in? Would that allow us, because of some health concern, would that give us, give us the opportunity to get out of this? Or what is the term of this, is another way to say it, I guess?
Yes, we do have some outs built into this, not only for, for what, some of the examples you're giving, but if we were to decide to change something at the stadium, we have the ability to remove and, and they would have to replace at their cost the equipment if we did that. But we do have some outs in this contract.
If I remember correctly, Bill, the draft agreement provides that, the conditions before the installation of this cell tower is approval by the City Council of Wheaton, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I'm concerned there's a future discomfort.
So, we've heard about the fact that we've missed some opportunities in the past, and so, you know, we, that there are some located near our properties, to which we're not getting the revenue, somebody else is. If, if you know our hand approximately how many of those exist, I'd be interested. If you don't, you don't. But I guess my other question is, do you foresee us having other opportunities coming up at other schools where we could do the same thing? Or is this, you think, maybe just gonna be probably our only opportunity at this?
Yeah, I, I would certainly not rule out the, the possibility that other opportunities could come available. I think also important to, to note in the agreement is that we own the, we own the pole, we own the space. As long as it doesn't conflict with their signal, we actually have the ability to, to lease additional space on this existing tower if we so chose. So I think that, you know, could certainly lead to, you know, to, to other opportunities that, you know, might come along and, and be available. And I guess, I think as Mr. Farley has said, certainly, if you look at the other school districts that have approved similar agreements, in many cases, it has led to other opportunities that, you know, have come available to them, either at a, at a partner high school or, you know, on, on same property.
I've got a couple of questions on the document, the legal agreement, lease agreement. I'm looking at a redlined version, I assume that's the final copy? And has that been approved or accepted by Verizon? That's question number one. Question two, I'm intrigued by the fact that the annual rental that they initially offered us was eighteen thousand dollars, and how did we land on thirty thousand dollars instead of a hundred thousand dollars, as an example?
I did leave the redline copy because it did, it did address or point out some of the comments we had from board members relative to outs if we were to make some changes to, from experience at other school districts, trying to do some stadium enhancements and having cell tower issues coming the way. They did start at eighteen. I did contact the city of Wheaton, the Park District, other school districts to get an idea of what their rents were. The thirty thousand dollars, where we landed was the number we ended up, I ended up landing on with negotiations relative to what I saw from other school districts and, and other agreements. So, two questions. First up, thirty thousand a year, but it's a twenty-five-year agreement potentially for, for, five total terms, which is five years each, which is not thirty thousand, it's one point one million almost of potential revenue to the district. So that's a lot bigger than one-year agreement. The others, high schools you mentioned, those are, are those towers or are those flagpoles? I think Naperville. Sorry. My light's on right here. So are those, I know Naperville School District had to go through this, and they were looking at a flagpole, which is a lot lower to the ground than what we're proposing here. And if you read the Cancer Society website, they, they make a comment that the elevation above the ground is a significant factor. So the other high schools that we've compared to, I think St. Charles and Wheaton, are those towers like this? I'm not sure, I believe they are towers. The one in Conant we were looking at was a tower. We are at the height limit for the city of Wheaton, a hundred and five feet, so we are, you know, the, the ten array is at the tallest point of that, of that pole. So there are lower ones, the one over by Grace Evangelical, I believe, is a lower cell tower pole, if I remember correctly. So you may see, you know, the ones on the, on the water tower at the fairgrounds are obviously up there pretty high, but what I saw from some other school districts when they sent me some pictures were, were cell towers themselves. But the flagpole model does exist as well. So it's only eighteen feet taller than the existing light tower over proposing. It's eighty-seven, a hundred and five. Where does the, I saw the building on there, and typically these things have buildings, houses, where does that go? I drove by the site today, and I, I don't know how big the building is, but I couldn't imagine where it would go unless it went inside the fence for the visitor stands. They actually build them with little brick buildings that go pretty close to the, that are located pretty close to where the pole is. So I sent you a picture of what's over at Conant, what it would look like, 'cause that, that was why I asked them to get a picture of it. Actually, they were putting it in as, as we were negotiating the one at Conant, so it's a little, a little building that goes right next to, pretty close to where the pole actually is. So, so it would have to go inside the fence line, on the south of the existing light pole? Otherwise, you'd have to go in the parking lot, we don't wanna do that, of course. And how, the one at Edmond Park, how close is that to that immediate neighborhood? Is that on the south side of Edmond Park? It's, it's at the west side between the two ballparks and that back parking lot, if you can envision where that's at. It's located right, right about there.
My, my only comment, thank you for answering the questions, by the way. Based on public comment tonight and the emails that we've received, and Mrs. Swanson, she asked a great question about the urgency of this, this decision with Verizon, and Bill's confirmed that they're not gonna walk from this opportunity. I, I would feel better that we at least give the public, both pros and cons, to weigh in on this topic and then maybe move this to a, to another action item or consent agenda item at a later meeting, just so that we are giving those folks who are passionate about it on either side, the opportunity to share with us their, their opinions, and then maybe put this back on the consent at a later date. That's, that, what I would like to see happen tonight, if my colleagues would agree to that.
Mr. Gagnani, I think you kind of anticipated a little bit where I'm going with this in my mind. You know, I think that this is an excellent idea and an excellent opportunity. It's clearly being responsive to what the Engage 200 people told us, which is we've gotta get out there and look at other sources of income. And clearly, other people are making this income with towers that are sitting right there with almost as close to our students as this tower would be. So, you know, from that aspect of things, it, it doesn't make sense not to do it, as well as the Cancer Society clearly states that this is not really a, a health issue. My, my dilemma is, though, that we really are embarking at the beginning stages of this Engage 200 process, where the whole idea is to make sure that the community is appropriately involved in various issues. Now, that certainly doesn't mean that they have to weigh in on every single thing, on every single vote, but on something where there's sort of a cultural concern that can be anticipated, if there is an opportunity to allow some sort of venue to talk about that, I think it would be to our advantage to do that. And it wouldn't even necessarily have to be, of course, certainly people can contact us and have, you know, public comment, but I'm thinking, you know, task force. Task forces are always great. Put together a group that, you know, includes some parents, and we heard from a booster president tonight, it sounds to me like they would, you know, be in favor of it, but on the other hand, you know, put together just, just a one-time group to sit there and say, here's the opportunity, give us your feedback, just to make sure that we're in touch with what our community is, is thinking, and that we don't get out ahead of ourselves early in the game of this Engage 200 process, where we trip ourselves up later on in that. I, I hate to be the person that kind of slows things down, because I think, you know, a lot of times, boy, if we could do it any slower, it would be hard to imagine. But, but nonetheless, I think it's really important for us to establish that sense of trust in terms of this process that we have followed. And does something like that, just let me ask the staff, does something like that seem feasible, or is it going to be something that's going to, to nix the deal? Because if it is, I'll, I'll just put my cards out there, if, if it truly were, I'd be willing to take the responsibility and say, yes, I'm going to vote for this, because that's what we're elected to do, is to kind of sit in trust for the community. And it, clearly, there do not seem to be real health issues involved in this, legitimate health issues involved in this. But it's more a matter of the communication side of things. So is there a potential to do something like this? Or maybe you have already spoken to parent groups about it?
So, again, I guess, just in terms of, of timing of the, the deal, I, I don't think that not voting on this tonight, based on what you've heard from Mr. Farley, is gonna kill this opportunity for a revenue source. The timing involved in putting together a task force to, to do that, I get a little bit concerned about that, just because of, of, I think, the, the organization and putting together a task force and then engaging them in a meaningful way. I think you have existing groups out there that we can certainly solicit feedback from this morning. I met with the PTA council this morning and, and talked about this very item at the council, asked for any feedback that they had. I did not receive any feedback or concern on this item from PTA council this morning. Mr. Matheson and I are member of, of Wheaton Lions and, and shared this at the Lions meeting earlier this week with the same interest in saying, does this raise any concern or controversy, you know, for you? And, and I don't think hurt anything. So I think there are groups that we can reach out to and, and solicit that feedback. I would be comfortable doing that. I would, you know, I'm not opposed to the concept of a task force, I just don't know that we'll get as meaningful a feedback from a select small group that we choose and engage, rather than simply making the community aware of the fact that we're, we're listening to feedback and bring that back to you.
I, I have another idea that just kind of popped into my mind, and I'm wondering if we couldn't just post this intention like we post curriculum for thirty days? I mean, we're not required by law, but what if we posted on our website or posted as we post curriculum or post textbooks or whatever else, our intention to do this and ask for any comment, you know, in a thirty-day period? And then we would know that we would be able to take a vote, let's say, at the next regular meeting, and, you know, we would have, give people a deadline, we wouldn't have a, you know, a large group of people wanting and needing a whole lot of time. But if, I think thirty days might be a, a good, a good window for people to weigh in and, and then see what happens. And the, the other thing that I would like to see, and I'm sure you have this, so I know I'm, I'm not asking you for anything new, is, I don't know if Mr. Claypool's still here, but, you know, I would like to hear from the, if the staff has any concerns, the staff of Wheaton Morville South has any concerns about it. They're gonna be living in the building every day, they're gonna be there with all the students every day. I mean, I would think that they would have understood that this was gonna happen and, and accept it. So, so I think it's, it's important to hear from a variety of stakeholders, and maybe by posting it or, you know, advertising on the website that, you know, we want your feedback on this item. I mean, and publicizing it in the newspapers or whatever, you know, might be a way to get some feedback, and then we could have a vote in thirty days.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I mean, in essence, if we choose to table this tonight and come back at it, that's exactly what's gonna happen, is that the public's gonna have thirty days to, or ward until our next meeting to weigh in and however they choose. I think the problem with simply doing it that way is, is twofold. First of all, it doesn't give people the ability to get any background context, that if you go out, as Dr. Schuler is talking about, you know, reaching-
And then we could have a vote in thirty days.
I, I hear what you're saying. And I, I mean, in essence, if we choose to table this tonight and come back at it, that's exactly what's going to happen, is that the public's going to have thirty days to, or ward until our next meeting to weigh in and however they choose. I think the problem with simply doing it that way is, is too full. First of all, it doesn't give people the ability to get any background context. That if you go out, as Dr. Schuler is talking about, you know, reaching out to some groups, he's able to explain, this is the Engage Two Hundred initiative to get alternate revenue. It's one point two million dollars over the course of five years. There's a, how many, twenty-five years, sorry. And, and so forth. In other words, all of the things around it. Whereas if you just simply say, hey, tell us what you think. Not that I don't appreciate people's opinions, but some may be more informed or less informed. And then we'll have a host of opinions coming at us that may, may not, you know, be, be great, be grounded in facts.
I think what we should do, if we're going to do anything at all, is first of all, give people facts as we know them. So I, I'm not suggesting that we post something without putting some background information behind it. You know, I mean, I think we should put as much background information as we have out there, including the Cancer Society study. I, I don't know that, that we can, and I would say we advertise it more than just by having tabled it tonight. So in other words, we, so I, I wasn't suggesting just saying, okay, we'll table it and then thirty days we'll talk about it again and that, and therefore people will know.
If I can just have one more comment and then I'll be quiet, I think. And that is, I think we could let the staff figure out all the ways to approach it. We don't have to really figure that out here at this table. But I do think that it would be good to know whether that is the opinion of the entire board or whether other board members wish to just vote on it tonight. So I think, you know, that's something that we need to ascertain. If they're ready to vote and think that's, you know, the way to go, then we should do that as opposed to what I'm suggesting.
I think we have to vote down the, the point if we want to table it, whatever. It's not the issue. I think, you know, I've heard various comments tonight. Number one, I think the use of the consent agenda, we removed it, we posted it, we did all those things. I don't know that we're going to find any empirical evidence that's going to say that this is not going to go. The city has approved it, you know, the park district's approved it, so on. I personally have buildings I own that have towers on them. So, you know, I could never vote against this in good conscience. So, so I just, you know, and, and in addition, you know, we've talked about forever having alternative revenue sources. And I, you know, if we, if we debate every alternative revenue source like this, you know, people can stop coming. So I, I am not in favor of tabling. I think we should make a decision before.
I'm inclined not to favor tabling and proceeding on a vote. And I'd like to hear, Bill, you mentioned in your discussion that there was an opportunity for a cell tower before at Wheaton South and eventually got constructed at Edmond Park. Can you provide us with any background information about what transpired on that occasion?
That goes back a ways. So my memory is a little faint, but there was discussions as to whether to bring it forward. I don't believe it was a board decision per se. It was probably more at the administrative level. We did have one at Edison that was going to be a flagpole. We did get a lot of pushback. I think it got tabled at the time as well. But I, I don't recall all the details surrounding the one that, that eventually ended up at Edmond Park. But that, I believe that was Sprint or it was one of the cellular companies that's been bought out at, at the time. That were bought out by Sprint. But, and I don't recall if it got to the board level or not.
I'm comfortable with, um, with either way. I, but I, if it could just be decided tonight, it's, you know, off the plate, do it. Um, I doubt we'll get, I'm just torn. I really, I could go either way on it. But I'm hap, if we do take a vote tonight, I would vote for it. And I think in thirty days, I'd vote for it. So, uh, that didn't help.
Can you hear me now? That's all I had to say. Well, I was, I'm somewhat like Mrs. Cackill, kind of torn over whether we should do it tonight or not. You know, from the, it's really a balance of three different issues. There's the revenue side, which is huge. That's undeniable. There's the health issues, which, you know, all the research indicates it's really not a health issue with these RF waves. Then there's the neighborhood. Now, I drove through that neighborhood today before the meeting, just to kind of check it out. And with all the vegetation and trees in that area, I can't imagine more than like one or two homes are going to even see this thing. We have a light tower there right now. It's thirteen feet shorter than what we're proposing. So I can't imagine what kind of feedback we're going to get from the neighbors that would inform or change our decision tonight. You know, I think maybe there's value in talking to the teachers. I'm not sure what we're going to get out of that. So I think we've had a good discussion. We pulled it off the consent agenda. It's not kind of a foreign issue within our community. It's like we have cell towers everywhere. So I could support voting on it tonight. I also could support tabling it for thirty days. It's really not our schedule. It's somebody else's schedule that's really driving this. If, if it's really driving it, I don't know. But, I mean, there's a whole series of steps that have to happen between us and then the city and then the construction process. I can see where it would be beneficial for the school to have all the work done over the summer. I don't even know, is that the schedule to try to do it over the summer?
I would hope so, because we, we do have summer camps and, I mean, there's a very narrow construction window. And, and obviously, it's a school, I don't know who I'm talking to. You know, there's obviously a very, very narrow window. And it's even narrower on those, on the football stadium, because we have a number of outdoor camps that go on during, during the summer as well. And I don't want to start the season with three football bowls at Wheaton South. So, you know, it is a very narrow window. That's, that would be one, like you say, we don't have, the time's not an issue for us. I would say it is a bit, because I really need to know when the city's going to get it approved and work with Wheaton South. They have a lot of director, the principal, the director of facilities to try and find out when that window is to get that, get that down.
I guess, I guess my only pause is that, did we hear from the school? Do they have issues? I know I probably not going to hear anything from the neighborhood. But that's, that's my only issue. It's kind of holding me back a little bit from voting tonight.
So what I will tell you is that I, I've sent through Mr. Claypool. I did send an email to the Wheaton South, you know, faculty with a lot of the information that is included in your presentation tonight. I've heard, not heard back a specific concern. It certainly indicate that we would gladly answer any questions that would, would come about, you know, through that. In fairness, that email did not go out like weeks ago. That email went out very recently, because I think the same individual that contacted the board with concerns also contacted a number of staff members with the, the same level of concern. And so we sought to clarify, I think, that piece. I guess one thing I do, let me just offer this to the conversation. You've set as a board a goal for looking at alternative sources of revenue. Even if this passed tonight, but passed on a four-three vote, I think you're potentially sending a mixed message out to the community as to whether you really support the alternative revenue source if the four-three vote is a result of the timeline for communication. And I would rather not see that happen. So I think some of the board members that have indicated they would prefer to see a table, I think if that caused you to vote no tonight and that really put us in a, in a split vote piece, I'm more concerned about that communication out to the community suggesting that there is a divide among the board on whether this is a good idea or not. And so if time helps you feel better about something, you're inclined to support. My two cents, I don't have a vote, just a recommendation. But I, I would prefer to see board support, because this is the first, I'm sure, of some other concepts that may come to you in the future on alternative sources of revenue. And, and I think it's important that the community get a clear message about the value and the emphasis the board's placing on that.
Is it something we can bring back in two weeks if the community, the whole? I mean, I know that would have to then be an action item at that meeting. But two weeks might be important for the construction process.
But my, my question is this. For, for those of you who might vote no if we vote tonight, what sort of assurances do you need within the next thirty days to, to change your mind? So, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if we're going to have a four-three tonight and thirty days from now, we're still going to have a four-three, then we might as well do it tonight. But if, if there's some information that any of you is looking for or some sense that might cause you to vote no tonight and yes thirty days from now, then that information needs to be specified to the staff so that they could gather that information so that we have it for the vote thirty days from now. Because if, if thirty days from now, we're going to be sitting there saying, well, I'm still not sure, or I still have concerns, you know, with the same information that we have tonight, it's, then we're wasting our time. So I would just like to know what information people would need to have that they don't have tonight in order to take this vote.
Isn't it just an opportunity for the public to, to weigh in? So that's the only reason. I am willing to vote to delay a vote on this for thirty days in order to have, because I'm going to tell you, in thirty days, I'm probably going to vote for this anyway. So, but to have a, an opportunity for the public to, to weigh in with the expectation, as Dr. Schuler has mentioned, when we do vote on it, when something really untowards, surprising information comes to our attention within thirty days, we'll have a seven-zero vote in favor of this in thirty days.
Since, since I was kind of the one that sort of kicked this off, I think in some ways, I, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is to protect the process. That's all I, as we're going forward with, with our Engage Two Hundred initiative. And if we're telling the community that we want them involved and we want to, you know, build that communication, I think we need to anticipate some of those places where we need to do some sorts of communications. So for instance, it was really helpful to me to hear that, you know, you spoke to PTA Council this morning. They didn't say anything, that you've spoken to Lions Club. Yeah, so, so that kind of information actually would be helpful in, in a report. And as we're anticipating putting together agendas where other types of items come on. And the agenda really belongs to the board. So, so the board's the one that, that takes the responsibility for what goes on and what doesn't go on. I think that's, we, we just need to shift our paradigm and say, let's think about this as to whether or not there's groups to reach out to. And it doesn't have to be a big, big process. I mean, I mentioned a task force, but, but I think we got the idea, Dr. Schuler. Just reach out to the appropriate groups and see, is there anything that indicates there's a concern or fallout? And, you know, I think we just need to sort of start getting into that mindset a little bit more. Maybe that's where I'm going with this. So to answer your question, right now, I would vote yes for this based upon what I know of the health risk and the opportunity. Seems to me, or I mean, I would vote yes, excuse me, I would vote yes for this based upon the health risks, which don't seem to be any, and the opportunities which seem to be good. But it's the process that I want to make sure we get off on the right foot and not trip over something relatively real.
What's the criteria for having an action item? Don't we have to post it? Isn't it, isn't that all the things that we vote on in action items have to be posted and there's a timeframe? A, a legal requirement and so on? Have we not met those obligations on this? I, I, I think we're, you know, I, I don't know. We have long meetings, live, I, I don't understand this, I really don't.
It could just bring into debate as to what ones we, what topics and what action items we then have, want to go out. It's, um, I guess that would just be our decision as to if we want to be transparent, we want community involvement. But is it going to be on every issue? Is it just the debatable ones? You know, how do we decide that?
I, I think this is probably a good, because those questions are rolling around in my mind too, Mrs. Cackill. And I think this is probably something our community engagement committee can maybe talk about and discuss and think about what are the appropriate ways to look at all these different things. Because there are some things I think you want to definitely run by the community. I mean, and, and yes, Mr. Matheson is absolutely right, that every Thursday when our agenda goes out, it's available to the community to look at, weigh in on, and, and all of that. But how, are there certain things that maybe need more time, need more press, need, you know, need to be pushed out to certain groups of people? Are there, and so that's all part, in my view, of, of community engagement. And maybe, maybe what we need to do is, is charge that committee with coming, coming up with a process for things of this nature or processes, depending on, you know, the inflammatory nature or the lack of, you know, inflammatory nature of things. I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, I, I'm impatient to get this done. I think we ought to get moving on it. But I, but I also hear that, you know, that we may have some community concerns that we haven't addressed, you know. I mean, I, I'll go with the wishes of the consensus of the board. If you think we should move on it tonight, we'll move on it tonight. If you want to call for the vote, if you want. It's up to the seven of us what we do. It's certainly not my call, but.
Let's say that I did the following. I, I talked this over with community members. I talked over with fifty people, thereabouts, fifty to a hundred maybe. I, you know, I've heard a representative from the Wheaton Warrenville South Booster Club tonight, who I think is speaking on behalf, is, as I heard that. And, you know, you know, how many more people do we have to have? I, I just, again, I, I'm looking at this as a little more policy issue again. We've complied with policy, we've displayed, and so on. So I, I just, I think we're, you know, I, I guess we're going to have to revisit how we post action items. You know, that to me is more significant. And this is the bigger picture of, of community engagement. Maybe they got to be on for six months before we vote on something. I don't know, you know. I, I just, you know, I mean, again, I've done my job and I've talked to people. And I, I feel like this is now, you know, why are we going to go through this on and on? You know, I don't want to make this a bigger issue than it is, but I, you know, I, I feel like I've done my mission as a board member, as a community representative.
What do you have a motion? I thought, I thought we put a motion on the floor before we started this. I'm sorry.
Should we approve the contract or is that the proper term there with the cell tower? The agreement with the cell tower construction?
Will be Mr. Matheson. Second by Mr. Vroman. Any further discussion?
On, on, Bill, on this document, it references School District Ninety-Five. Am I missing something here?
Wheaton Warrenville School District Two Hundred is, is also known as, it's, we were formerly District Ninety-Five before we merged with Warrenville School District and became District Two Hundred forty years ago.
Something that did miss that opportunity. It was a long time coming.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Just to say, I am going to vote yes for this. And I don't want you to think that I'm crazy, but I, I, my comments were intended to say, I think we just need to improve our process of looking at these things from the agenda setting standpoint in the future so that when it comes to us, we've got our ducks in a row relative to community engagement.
Okay, Mrs. Senator, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matheson?
It's a tough choice, but I think I'd vote yes.
Mr. Vroman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intar?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for your discussion and your concerns about our community members and... Thank you for your discussion and your concerns about, um, our community members, and, um, I think we'll, leadership team will work with Dr. Schuler to maybe get some, some, um, different processes together that will avoid this confusion in the future. Thank you.
Can I just make one quick comment before we move on without belaboring it? This is the process, though, so I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking any process is ever going to avoid the fact with, that, that somebody may take issue with an agenda item, and you have a process in place, it came off of consent, came out for discussion. So, so I think always room for improvement, I just, this is the process.
Correct, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate it. Okay. All righty, well, we have two written reports, uh, included in the board members' pack, is the monthly financial reports and FOIA requests. Are there any questions board members have on those written reports? Mr. Matheson?
I have a question, uh, staff, uh, we talked a little bit about the concern about SB One, I guess it is now, uh, we're concerned about some of the delay in the payments of the state money. Do we have a concern at this point that in May, before the tax bills start arriving, that we're gonna have sufficient dollars to meet obligations? And if, if so, have we made any arrangements for borrowing at that point?
We've looked at cash flow, uh, and our discussions with the State Comptroller's Office, and what we've heard, uh, we believe we will get one more categorical payment before May. If that were not to happen, uh, we still believe we would, uh, be okay, although we would probably come to the board with a loan request from the Operations and Maintenance Fund, because we do have fund balance sitting there. Uh, so we would, uh, potentially, uh, have to make, uh, some movement with some O and M fund balance to another fund to help prop that up, but we do not believe we would have to go after short-term borrowing at this time.
Bill, can you, um, quantify that number for the audience, about how many millions of dollars we're looking at right now?
Sure, every quarterly categorical payment is about two point seven million dollars, paid out in September, December, March, and June. Uh, we received a September payment in December, uh, we have not received a December, um, payment, and we're, um, right in the middle of March. So, uh, historically, that money would come towards the middle, towards, uh, middle to the end of the month, uh, so if we get, at the end of March, and we still haven't received a payment, a payment, uh, we'll be behind two payments or, you know, over five million dollars.
As a follow-up to that, I'm looking at, again, the, uh, monthly activity. We, in this month, we had a deficiency of revenue over expense on cash base of about twelve million dollars, and that's through February. So, does that include any categorical, categorical revenue in there? Because that's about a deficit of twelve million per month. If we go on till, uh, March, April, May, because we don't receive any tax money till then, we'd be, could be down to five million dollar balance, that's what concerns me.
That, that only includes the one categorical payment we received this year. And we received it in December. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, board, reports from board members, are there any board committee reports?
Wes Jimwes, just a real quick report from the Facility Committee. If you recall, we've kind of organized our master plan process, and the focus areas one, two, and three, uh, the committee met last, seems like, maybe last week, I'm out of the date, with, uh, our current architect on focus area one, which is the physical conditions of our buildings, had a good discussion. Um, I think that's moving along on track for presentation in the future meeting. In terms of the focus areas two and three, the RFQ for, uh, looking at other architects was issued February twenty-sixth, went to twenty-five companies, have received it. Uh, we had a pre-submitment meeting, which was not mandatory, last week, and seventeen firms attended, which is pretty good turnout, even in our small little room. Um, so, the RFQ is actually due next Thursday, March nineteenth, so the process is underway, and, um, should be on target for, uh, decision in early to mid-May as planned.
Excellent, thank you, thank you both.
Any other?
Any other committee reports? I think we all met before the, the last meeting, so I don't think we had any other new ones except for facilities, so... Okay, there are other reports from board members. Okay, topics for future discussion are the technology update, the social-emotional learning, uh, update, and the professional development report. Our next regular meeting will be the, uh, Committee of the Whole on March twenty-fifth at seven-thirty at the School Service Center. And then our next business meeting will be April eighth, twenty-fifteen at seven-thirty PM at Hubble Middle School. Public comments on non-agenda items are, are now welcome, same rules apply as, uh, as I stated earlier. Mrs. Crabtree.
I'll be very quick, 'cause I know that you've all had a very long day. Um, I'm here to talk about a celebration. Last month, on February seventeenth, we chartered a brand-new PTA in our district, and I wanted to share that with you. It's the Wheaton Warrenville Special Needs PTA. Uh, very excited, in one month, we have over sixty members. Wanna just briefly share how this started. Illinois PTA contacted us last November and said, you know, there, there's a new trend, and, um, many districts are going to having a special needs PTA to offer a venue for parents with children with special needs. I contacted Joanne, I mean, within an hour, I think we already had a, a meeting on the table, and in November, we've pushed it forward this far. We had a, an overwhelming response from parents within the district for this, for this need. Um, and it's a, I just wanna share briefly a couple things. It's a, a place for parents to come together across our district. It's going to bring the, the pre-K children through transition, opportunities for parents that are gonna cover a wide variety, um, of ages. Uh, this is a vehicle for the district now to have a communication tool with a larger group of parents to be able to, um, share. And, and personally, I think the biggest opportunity, it's an opportunity to educate our community on the gifts that all of our children bring. So, we are so excited to be able to share that with you tonight, the nineteenth PTA in District Two Hundred, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree, that's fabulous news. Uh, there's, uh, no, uh, further action to come before the board tonight. Uh, we do have a need for closed session, uh, we need to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel items, no action as expected following the closed session, so I would, uh, ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting to closed session.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Matheson. Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Vroman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteart?
Yes, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.